To order, welcome council staff, members of the public who can join us this evening. And again, one of our virtual meetings, so I will start off with the council commitment. If you will indulge with me. The council commitment to for the town of Penetangusheen, we are grateful for the many gifts which have been bestowed on Penetangusheen and its citizens, including the gifts of freedom, opportunity, and peace that we enjoy. May we be worthy custodians of all that has been entrusted to us. We ask that all in attendance and those who could not be here assist us in promoting good government. May our decisions as members of council be enlightened and may we all be strengthened in our awareness of our duties and responsibilities. May we be granted the wisdom, knowledge, will, and understanding to preserve the good fortune of the town for the benefit of all and to make good laws and wise decisions. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to the approval of the agenda and the regular council agenda October fourteenth, twenty twenty. And that the agenda of the regular council meeting of October fourteen, twenty twenty be approved as presented. A mover? Counselor Sanamah, seconded by Counselor LaRose, all in favor? That is Carrie, thank you. We'll now go on to a declaration of pecuniary interest if anyone so has, they can declare at the proper time. We move on to six, which is a public meeting. And with the first one, we'd say that this is a public meeting under the Planning Act to consider an application to amend the town's zoning bylaw. And the first one that we have on our agenda is thirty-eight Point Street. And with that, I would just caution council that the purpose of this public meeting is not to engage in a debate regarding the merits of the application, nor is it intended to be a question and answer session. It is to provide an opportunity for the public to make comments and for council members to ask clarifying questions. And to the public, this is your opportunity to speak in support or in opposition of this application based on planning merits. And we encourage you to do so in accordance with the Planning Act. If a person does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or make written submissions before my law is passed or an approval given, you may not be entitled to appeal the decision to local planning appeal tribunal and you may not be added as a party to a hearing on an appeal to LPAP unless in the opinion of LPAP, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So with that, I would ask our planner Andrea Beddy if she would fill us in on this one.
Thank you very much, your worship, members of council, good evening and members of the public. This first public meeting is to address the zoning application we've received for thirty-eight Point Street. It was submitted by Michael Dupuy and I don't necessarily see him online at the moment, but I do know he was intending on coming to this meeting and giving a presentation of it. So if Mike is online, perhaps he could turn on his camera or signal somehow that he's here. What I can tell you about the application is that it was received on July twenty eighth. And it is to rezone the property at thirty-eight Point Street for an exception to the residential second density zone. What that request for the exception is for is to add two additional dwelling units to the existing four dwelling units on the property, or sorry, two dwelling units on the property. Make a total of four dwelling units. Under our zoning bylaw, that's what is called a double duplex. And additionally, the second request of part of that application is to increase the floor area for an accessory building for a detached garage. So that it can be larger than what the bylaw currently permits on the property. So the application was circulated in accordance with the Planning Act and the town's notice policy, including assigned posted. And to date, we have not received any comments or concerns noted with the application. And the applicant has provided some information in form of a presentation and some analysis as to how this application meets the provincial policy in the town's planning documents. So without doing too much more, if Mike is able to do the presentation, I could ask him to to do that. And if not, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Your Worship.
Do we have the applicant on with us?
Yeah, I am here.
Okay. Yes, would you have, do you have anything to add to the over and above what our planner has just given us?
Um, a few things, I don't know if everybody can see or has seen the presentation that was put together, the package?
Yes. I have an unsure members of council have.
Okay, sorry, my video is not working, I keep trying to engage it, but I think I'm getting blocked, so anyway. Yeah, in terms of the application, what the intent is to add two more dwelling, two more units to the current one for the purpose of obviously adding some more living space. Couple of things, one is this is not for rental units, this is going to be my home plus three rental units. So we will be living on the premises at the back. And our, my unit per se is going to be, won't be officially barrier free, but it'll be like all of the components of barrier free. So it'll have great access as well to to the street level. The existing home is, I believe it's a neighborhood of one hundred and twenty-five years old and it has ground level access as well. So it is a great barrier free dwelling. The doors would need to be worked on and things of that nature, but somebody with mobility challenges could certainly make use of that one. The existing building has a second story and that has a legal unit up there now, hence the duplex. So that would pretty much remain the same as it is. And the fourth unit would come in the form of a basement apartment that's under the, under a portion of the existing dwelling. Each of the units has their own private entrance. The main unit right here on the main floor has two covered porches, sorry, a covered porch and a deck. The unit up above has its own separate entry with a deck and a covered area. The basement apartment would have its own separate entry and a deck. And our unit at the back would have a separate entry at the back as well as a deck. So everybody has their own social space. And nobody is really, nobody's crammed together in terms of an entrance. So it's not going to be like a apartment building where everybody comes in to a common spot and then everybody disperses from there. This is, the intent is to try and make it for individual dwellings that are combined into a single building. There's a pretty good variety of units. The, the initial house, unit number one, as we're calling it, is going to be a three bedroom, one bath. Unit number two, which is the second story, is a two bedroom, one bath. The basement apartment will be a larger one bedroom, one bath unit. So more intended for, let's say, a professional or somebody that's, or a young couple, or somebody that doesn't have a lot of baggage or stuff come along with them. Our home is basically, it's a home, it's the equivalent of a house. If it will not have any basement, it's basically one level, easygoing stuff. The, in addition to that, there's currently a detached garage, has two bays on it. So two of the units will have indoor parking. And the intent is to add one more bay on there, plus a little bit of storage. So in total, there would be three interior parking spaces plus room for lawn mowers, snowblowers, things of that nature. There's lots of grass at the back, there's lots of room for parking. For something that's this close to downtown, it's going to be really hard to find anything that can afford as much parking as we can. Again, there's lots of place for people to spread out, do their stuff. So again, we're going to, the feel is to make four individual homes grouped together in one location versus a, an apartment building. There is a planning report that was done and I believe we are doing our best to adhere to all the, all the goals from the various levels of government to both intensify the, the population or the density of the dwellings and provide a variety of different formats for dwelling as well. Beyond that, I think the pictures can tell the story for the building from the street. We're not going to be adding that, adding anything to the landscape or the street, the streetscape, pardon me. As the portion that we're adding is a single story at the back. And it's going to, in my opinion, it's going to blend in very well with what's already there, so. Beyond that, I'm not sure I can add anything that's not already in the reports.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I would ask if there is anyone else in the audience or with us that, that would have anything to comment on either in opposition or support of this application? I don't see or hear from anyone. So with that, we will move on to find out if there are any questions from council on the information presented. Counselor Sanamah.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick question through to our, our planner. I honestly hadn't heard the term double duplex before. I've always heard like a fourplex, is there any reason, is there, is there a difference in, in the description or the, the legal description of them?
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Sanamah, that's, that's a great question and it's a bit of oddity in zoning bylaws, I guess. So in the town's zoning bylaw, we do define different types of residential uses based on what I call the built form, so how it looks internal of the building. So in this case, the, the double duplex would allow for divisions of buildings either horizontally or vertically. But we don't have a definition of a fourplex. We define a double duplex, which is in essence four units. We don't define a fourplex. And so for those reasons, we've gone through and just, that's what the request has been made of is to make the exception for a double duplex. And that way, it still matches what the defined terms are in the existing bylaw with making any new changes.
That's great, thank you very much, that just clears it up in my head.
Counselor Maya.
Thank you, your worship. Excuse me. I was just looking at the plan, like apartment four, which is downstairs. I was looking at the plan, isn't there an emergency door? In case of like a fire, I only see a set of stairs. Is that where the black mark is at the bottom, is that is it exit or emergency door or? I'm just curious.
Perhaps the applicant could answer that one.
Certainly I can do that. The, so looking at the plan, I've got it in front of me, in the upper left hand corner, we show a set of stairs coming from outside. So that's your grade level entry into the apartment. If you look at the bottom of the sheet, you can hardly see them, but there's a number of windows along that, that face. There's, the intent is to put a, an egress window either in the bedroom or directly beside the bedroom with a number of other windows along that wall. It does, it does meet the requirements of the Ontario Billing Code in terms of egress and sizes and all of that good stuff. So to answer your question, is there another set of stairs or door to the exterior? No, there's just the single door coming in.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Deputy Mayor Devoe, or I should say.
Thank you. Just clarification to the applicant, did you say a four car garage? I noticed in the picture, there's only three garage doors. So is it three or four?
Currently, it's a two car garage with the, and in the application, we've asked to put a third bay on there for a total of three interior parking spots.
Thank you. Just for clarification.
Further questions or concerns, members of council? There being none, then maybe Madame Planner, you could summarize the next steps in this process.
Sorry, your worship, my screen cut out and froze there, I'm not sure if you asked me a question, can you repeat it?
No, I, I actually asked if you could summarize the next steps in the, in the process.
Thank you, your worship, I did just catch the end of that, I wasn't sure if I was asked for something. So the next steps is, I believe there's a staff report in motion. And we're asking for council's direction to provide any comments or clarity questions you would like of us in a follow up report. Obviously respond to any comments that were, would have been received tonight. And that would, should come up at a future meeting, I won't promise anything, but I'm working towards our next meeting with that follow up report that would have a recommendation from staff.
Good, thank you. And I guess with that, no further comments, that would complete the application for thirty-eight Point Street. And thank you, sir, for your attendance and you will be in, our planner will certainly be in touch. So with that, I am not going to go through the whole preamble of this public meeting because the first
Sorry, your worship, sorry to interrupt, yep, we just, we do have a motion that needs a mover and a seconder for that first public meeting. They each have their own individual motions that we need to go through before moving to the next one.
Very good, so then we need a mover, deputy mayor, and counselor by the bank care. All in favor? Okay, thank you. So with that, we will, the first three, as I indicated, are for the same matter. So maybe now I could ask the planner Andrea to introduce the application for one thirty-six Fox Street.
Thank you very much, your worship. Again, we've received another application for rezoning, it's a property on Fox Street, one thirty-six Fox Street. The applicant and owner of the property, Mr. Mark Seaver, is online tonight and I do know there, he has a presentation that we are going to be able to share our screens with, I think Sarah's going to do that in the background so that Mark can introduce the application in a bit more detail to council. What I can indicate from the application is that we did give notice of tonight's public meeting to property owners within the required distance under the Planning Act. We've not received any formal comments in opposition or in support of the application tonight. And that the application is to actually rezone the property from commercial neighborhood zone, which is a mixed use zone permitting commercial and residential to occur into purely a residential zone, a residential first density zone, R one zone. So it would be in essence removal of all the commercial provisions of zoning on that property and transform it right into a residential property. The property meets all other rules and regulations of the zoning bylaw. I think with that fairly general summary, I turn it over to Mark and Sarah to introduce it in more detail.
Very good, Mark, if you will.
Good evening, everybody. Glad I could be here tonight. So yeah, my intent is that I would rezone it from the commercial neighborhood as Andrea has already mentioned. You can hear me okay, everybody?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. So I've gone through the, the master plan and as Andrea said, there, I did not see anything that would prevent me from applying for this rezoning. Just I, I believe that in my mind, it's more compatible to the, to the neighborhood to have, have residential zoning there. I've requested our one zone and my intent, putting it on the table, would be to then subdivide this hundred and fifty foot wide lot, that's a hundred and eighty feet deep, to make it into two lot, two seventy-five foot lot. So that's, that's my next step in my intent, putting it before council. So I knew because of the the proximity to the the waste treatment plant on Fox Street there, that I would have to do a D two environmental or, or study on this property. So I did go to Burnside and Burnside Engineering did a D two study, which subsequently has been peer reviewed by, if I'm getting the name right, Cadran or Cambium Engineering. So that peer review then is before, in the, in the possession of council there. And Andrea can speak more to that peer review. The I also believe that rezoning this lot, making it more amicable to the neighborhood. You know, I have talked to some neighbors there and, and one neighbor suggested having a, putting a bar in there. But he said that in tongue in cheek with a little bit of a smirk, but so I kind of believe that the neighborhood would be more accepting of a residential place as opposed to some kind of commercial unit there that might create noise or traffic or whatever. And I also own the corner lot, one thirty-two Fox Street. And for my planning purposes, I believe that that then makes the corner lot more more agreeable to a residential property there also, if it's not bordering on some kind of commercial entity. The following slides are just more, more backup information, supplemental information to referring to the official plan. And, and I did go through I can't even remember the, the terminology for the water, the watershed or the Andrea, help me out there, what, what the, what the water table is, but it's, that, that's noted in one of the slides there. I did do pre consultation, not only with Andrea, but also with Greg Athron of the MECP, out of Berry on this proposal. So I think that all I have to offer as far as my intents and purposes and requests to council and the mayor of, of being able to rezone it to the R one.
Very good, Mr. Seaver, thank you for your presentation. And there, I would ask if there is anyone else that would like to make any comments in opposition or support of the application based on the land used planning? Does anyone else with us that would like to make any comments? There doesn't appear to be, so that will bring us to asking members of council if they have any questions. Members of council, any questions in regards to this application? Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, worship, perhaps the owner can, can satisfy this question. Is a hundred meter separation from the present pump sewage treatment plant enough for residential area?
Planner?
Thank you very much, your worship. And so I, perhaps we'll jump in and answer on behalf of Mr. Seaver for Counselor Cummings. Part of what is done as part of that D two study is to evaluate what the land use compatibility or what the impacts may be and what's an appropriate separation distance. The D series guidelines from the MECP offers guidance as what could be an appropriate distance where more studies should happen or should occur. And so their guidelines say that, you know, in some cases, a hundred and fifty meters is an appropriate buffer from the sewage treatment plant where these types of studies should be done. So for that reason, we did have the D two study prepared or asked Mark to prepare that in support of the application and it's why we're getting it peer reviewed. From the D two study from Burnside, the recommendation is that a hundred meter setback or a hundred and five meter setback is an appropriate separation distance. And this new property that's under the zoning would meet that. We are confirming with our own peer review consultants, who is Cambium. And we did just get the peer review comments in just recently, so that's why council doesn't have that quite yet, but we will have those prior to the, the final recommendation. We've had those comments in and I would say there's no significant red flags coming out of those, that study about appropriate separation distance. And so once we finalize those, those details with both sides of the team, then hopefully we can come back with confidence and say a hundred meters is the appropriate separation, or is an appropriate separation distance from the sewage treatment plant to a residential land use?
Thank you.
Anyone else that questions through? Either being none, again, Madame Planner, what are the next steps in this process?
Thank you very much, your worship. The next steps are very similar to previous, we will be meeting very quickly from, to finalize the peer review and get some recommendations and confirm what's appropriate there. And when that is completed and staff are satisfied, we will take a report to council in the future with recommendations. And if there's any information or feedback we receive from the public as well, that would form part of that future report. And I am aiming for the November council, or sorry, committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you, Madame Planner and Mr. Seaver, thank you for your presentation and our planner will certainly be in touch, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We now move on to the third application and this one is in regard to seventeen Peel Street. So Madame Planner, if you could introduce this one?
Sorry, your worship, we do need to
Oh, I need mover and a seconder on the other one?
Do we, does council want us to read the motion to make sure they're, they know what they're moving and seconding and voting, no? Okay.
I think they have a good idea, but you want them, does anybody want the clerk to read the motion? I don't see any yeses. So a mover and a seconder on that one. Counselor LaRose and Counselor Cummings, all in favor? Carrie, okay, now Madame Planner, if you would give us the spiel on seventeen Peel.
Yes, thank you very much, your worship. So we've received an application for the property at seventeen Peel Street. It's been submitted by Joanne Menard on behalf of the owner, Ray Lauren of the property. I think Joanne is online, she was calling in tonight to be able to give a little bit of an introduction or presentation to council and answer any questions. What I can tell you is that the application is an application that's again, a site specific zoning amendment, so it would only be impacting this property. And it's to permit retail sales to occur from the property as a, as part of the home occupation. Currently, the town has a general provision dealing with retail or with home occupations and it's very clear that retail is not permitted from as a home occupation and the applicant has asked for that change to be made for this property only. We circulated the application in accordance with the Planning Act and the town policies. I've not received any comments to date to provide for council on support or opposition to tonight's application. I think that's as brief as I can be for the introduction, I'm not sure if Joanne has more to, to add.
Joanne, are there, do you have further comments or information that you would give to members of council? It wouldn't appear, I don't know, is, is Joanne with us, you know?
I believe that she is, she was joining by phone, so it might just be complicated for her to unmute. So I guess I'll just ask Sarah if it's possible to unmute her or not. It might not be.
Hello?
Oh, Joanne?
Hi.
Hi, Joanne.
Hi, everyone. Hello. I do have something I'd like to add to that.
Yes, go ahead, Joanne.
Okay. Well, hello, Mr. Mayor and all the members of council. Thanks for the invite for the meeting tonight. Most of you all know me, but for those of you who don't, my name's Joanne Menard. And I'm the owner of OMG Men and Women's Fashions. We've had the pleasure of being on the main street for the past six years. But due to the COVID-19 virus and no rent relief, this forces to leave our retail space. So running the business through our home was the best and only option for us to reopen safely for our clientele. That's why I'm applying for a rezoning, a zoning amendment for our shop since we live so close to the downtown core. While we hope that things will change soon, but in the meantime, this is what we need to do to survive and keep our business here in Penetang Machine. So I, you know, I hope you can review that and we can stay located here in Penetang.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. And I do have to ask if there's anyone else in our audience that would like to make any comments in opposition or support of this application? And it would not appear to be, so then I would ask members of council if they have any questions concerning this application. Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, worship. Joanne, are you going to continue to use your sales online? Or are you going to create a retail storefront?
Well, I'm still going to be operating really the way that I am now. Just doing a few renovations in the shop to get myself set up a little bit better. But right now there's only, you know, one person at a time. It's not really walk-in traffic. I'm only doing private appointments and curtside pickups. So yes, it's mainly online right now. People just come pick up.
Can you thank you?
Further questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Dubois.
Thank you, your worship. Just clarification as well. There is access to that property by lane. It is in behind your property, like your property goes right out to, to the, to the lane that goes back there?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions or concerns? There being none, then again, Madam Planner, I think that you will do the same process as the others and that we will be in touch, someone will be in touch with Joanne at some point in time. So Joanne, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
With that, we move on to, oh, I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Saint Ma and Counselor Biddamakir are all in favor. That is Carrie. And with that, we move on to D, which is a public meeting under the Planning Act to provide an opportunity to comment on the proposed removal of the holding H symbol for the property at 53 Church Street. So again, the purpose of the public meeting is not to engage in debate regarding the merits of the proposed changes. This is to council and to the public. It's an opportunity to speak and we encourage you to do so. And so with that, I will move it on to the planner to give us a little bit on this application.
Thank you very much, your worship. So as council will tell, this is a slightly different type of zoning application than the three previous applications we just dealt with. This one is a, what we refer to as a technical type of rezoning application whereby the town has imposed or required a certain requirement or regulation to be met. And once that has been met, then the town can consider removal of the holding symbol. So in this case, the town received an application to remove the holding H symbol for the property at 53 Church Street. And the obligation was to repay the municipality some front-ending servicing costs that we acquired when we rebuilt Church Street. So I can confirm that the applicant has satisfied that requirement and that there has been no comments received from the public regarding the removal of the H from this property.
Again, are there any questions from anyone in the audience who may speak for or against this application? Members of council, any questions through to the planner? Okay, then if there are none, thank you, everyone. And our planner will deal with this another moment in time. Mover and a seconder on this one, Counselor Saint Ma and Counselor Cummings, all in favor. That is Carrie. So with that, we will move on to seven, which is deputations and presentations. And this evening, we have a presentation by Monteith Brown, read the Arena and Recreation Centre Study update. And I believe we have Mr. Langua with us. Steve, you're there.
I am. Thank you, your worship. I will see if I can share my screen here. Perfect. Everyone should be seeing that. So thank you for having me tonight, your worship and members of council. Wanted to provide you with an update on, and this is the first update for the Arena and Recreation Centre Study. What we're calling a bit of a shorter name than the feasibility study with location needs and, and business plan elements is what it entails. So I'd like to acknowledge and thank Mayor Leroux and Counselor Saint Ma, who are also on our project steering committee. So purpose of tonight's meeting is to introduce the study formally to council and solicit your, your input and your comments and suggestions as we go maybe at the end. But certainly I can come back to any slides if you wish. We'll be presenting key findings to date, including what we've heard so far through the preliminary public input phase, discussing key facility components that will be considered through the study and next steps. So I'll move quickly. I think everyone has a good sense of what the study at its core will be trying to achieve. The focus is really on two existing facilities, the Penetang Memorial Community Centre, your arena and your curling club, as well as any other indoor facilities that may not currently, you know, that may be in demand but are not yet currently in place in the town. So specifically, we're looking at three things, facility and program needs, investment options. And that would include a locational assessment if there's a need to move away from the existing sites. And obviously the costs associated with doing so. Now, we've assembled a, an expert team to provide you with the answers that you'll need to make your decisions and work into long-term capital budgets and, and other key municipal documents and decision processes. So ourselves with Monteith Brown, we are the project managers. We're involved in the recreation planning, consultation and location assessments. We have MJMA, an architecture firm that does a lot of recreation facilities throughout Ontario and internationally. They'll be involved in concept design, capital costing. And John Frittenberg with the JF Group. And we worked with John for several decades now around business planning and partnership evaluation. So you'll likely see those folks, representatives from, from their firms in future meetings. Just to let you know that we're still early stages, there's been a five-phase work plan devised to lead us through this in sequential order. That way we don't put the cart before the horse. We start with identifying needs and then we work towards eventual assessment of different options to satisfy those needs as well as costs. Right now, we're, we're just finishing up phase two and launching into phase three, which is going to, in much more detail than I will today, confirm what those needs might be, both current and future. Now, while we're not quite yet at the point of fully evaluating all of the provision options, the ones that have jumped to the fore and that we intend to consider more fully through this study are listed on your screen right here. So first one being, you know, maintain and retrofit. So invest in your existing facilities as you have been doing for the last 40 to 60, 70 years. Another option, these are in no particular order, but the other options really involve some form of new build. So it's developing a new recreation centre of some design and inclusion, either with curling, either without curling. And then either decommissioning or repurposing or maintaining the, you know, one or both of the facilities that you do have. So you can think of it a little bit as a few moving pieces that we do need to bring some clarity to. Now, we do know any new build would really require land acquisition, hence the location analysis component of this study. Because both sites are not currently large enough to, to consider any, any further sizable expansion. So I have a couple of slides here and based on what we're hearing from your community and successful models elsewhere, we have a framework of consisting of about 10 different statements that we think will be very helpful to guiding our decisions and your decisions as you go through this. So during question period, I would welcome your feedback on these, on these statements. First and foremost, building a healthy community and fostering active lifestyle. So this should be a core output from whatever decision is made. It's one thing to focus on the facility and the bricks and mortar, but I think it's very important to not lose sight of all of the activities and the programming and the services and the connections that would occur under that roof or those roofs, as it may be. We challenge you to think beyond the rink. And this has been a key message in our consultation with the public to date. While this is an arena study, it's not just an arena study. And there should be opportunities to support multi-use, multi-generational amenities and potentially doing that under one roof, which has been the successful trend in many other communities. We need to be strategic, seek long-term solutions. Your existing arena, I probably just celebrated, I think it was its 66th birthday. So, you know, we know what sort of legacy and what sort of longevity these facilities need and can have. That's the type of timeframe that we're planning for. Maximizing geographic and barrier-free accessibility, that comes to play with the location and just the barrier-free aspect. The facilities that you do have were built at a different era when, when that was not a requirement or consideration. And you've done some, some good things to improve that. But there's new builds or retrofits as they are, can offer more. Addressing local needs first, but considering the North Simcoe market. We definitely recognize Penetang Machine is not an island unto itself. There's a lot of cross-pollination with, with your surrounding municipalities. And I think that's to everyone's benefit. So we want to put your needs first, but also look at those other opportunities. We also want to support sport tourism opportunities, but not at the expense of meeting local needs. Build it and they will come. You will not see that written into our report. We think it's, it's important to take a conservative approach and one that's, one that's practical and reliable that you can reliably use for your community. We want to prioritize flexibility in design. You know, it was probably about 10 years ago, we started talking about pickleball. But I'll tell you, 20 years ago, I would not have known what that was. And, you know, that's one opportunity that can be played indoors right now and is in growing demand in your community. So we want to allow for some flexibility and possibly future expansion if a new build was contemplated. Encouraging environmentally responsible and energy efficient designs. This is a real push in many new, in many capital projects nowadays is to find efficiencies as well as to reduce that carbon footprint. Considering partnerships that enhance community benefit and financial feasibility. We recognize, you know, the, the town will certainly take on the lion's share of whatever project comes forward. But there's many ways to work with others. So we've been reaching out through our consultation program and trying to learn more about what some of those opportunities may be. And last, but certainly not the least, is making decisions that are financially responsible and affordable for the town and its residents. So my next set of slides, just want to lead you through quickly what, what we're finding to date around the needs assessment. And this is guided by an evidence-based model that helps us to define current and future needs. So we start off, you know, with that environmental scan, what, what decisions and, and what decisions have been made in the past? What directions are you considering? And we know that a recreation centre has been a high priority by your council, identified by your council and community for many years through your master plan and your community strategic plan. We know your arena, I won't go through all of this, but it's available if, if you want to just get your, your facts and figures on what it, what it entails. We know it's a, it's a very well-known facility locally. But like any facility of this age, more repairs are required over time. And so our options are really, do we, do we maintain it and renovate it? Or do we look to replace it on a new site? And similarly, the curling club, as much as the arena might be a senior citizen, the curling club is in middle age. And it does have additional repairs and replacements that are, that are pending. Structurally, it's in good condition like the arena, but life cycle items indicate that, you know, are in, are a poor life cycle phase right now. And not to mention its, its location within Rotary Park is an important piece of your, of your waterfront property. And I think most would concur that this is not necessarily the highest and best use for the site. Other considerations that, that we look at, your aging population is certainly well-known. This is something that many communities throughout Ontario are, are experiencing. But it's also a growing community and, you know, it does have an influence on recreational needs. So we need to look very closely at this. The graph on the bottom left there sort of shows the different age groups over the last 20, 25 years. And you see that steady drumbeat increase of seniors aged 65 plus. Whereas you start seeing some declining numbers in terms of children, youth and adults of childbearing age. Looking into the future, population projections, this is for Simcoe County. So, you know, I think certain trends can be applied to your town as well. But that continued growth, 61% growth in the seniors age category can be anticipated as well. So, you know, when we talk about thinking beyond the rink, the arena is traditionally and primarily used by youth, particularly during prime time. And that's an age group that will increase by 12%, just slightly under what your entire population growth would, is currently forecasted to reach. Usage and trends, I'll just give you the highlights here. We're looking at how your arena and the North Simcoe Sports and Recreation Centre is used. Prime time is well subscribed. You know, that's sort of the five to 10 PM and largely on weekends is prime time. You know, but there are indicators that there's still strong demand for those arenas. That said, ice fort registrants have not really increased and not really changed, very steady and stable over the course of the last six years. Some groups have gone up marginally, others have fallen back. So, but stable in that respect. Aging of the population has led to a bit of a bump in terms of curling members. And they're currently sitting around just short of 200 members for the last, for the last full pre-COVID season. And we talk about thinking beyond the rink, new recreation activities, pickleball, basketball, other gym sports, other types of social and wellness activities are commonly being provided through a drop-in or programmed approach at several multi-use centres throughout the province. So in terms of public consultation, we've held one open house that was held virtually. It is now complete and we have received 157 online submissions to that. So we're working our way through those responses and I have a slide on that in a moment. We've also completed interviews and questionnaires with over 20 different groups, your primary user groups, as well as potential partners and stakeholders involved in the sector. Written submissions are always available to the public if they want to provide additional information for us to consider throughout the project. for us to consider throughout the project. And then additional consultation will be held as we approach future phases of the study. Those are not yet scheduled. In terms of what people, the response to the online survey, the types of facility components that they want considered in a recreation center, whether it's new or expanded. Certainly, the arena for skating and hockey, that's important. We did not ask them about demand for one to two ice pads. That is something that we will look at, our own indicators to determine. Indoor walking track has been a consistent request, and that's commonly designed into many recreation centers that are built today. And then space for older adult activities, child and youth activities, a gymnasium, and possibly a curling rink. At the end, sort of the write-in ballots, as they are, we did not say that an indoor pool is in scope of the study, but that was about 20% had specifically mentioned a request for an indoor pool. Overall, strong support is being expressed in your community for a new recreation center containing many of those elements that I just outlined. Satisfaction with the existing arena is mixed. Common suggestions include the need for upgraded or new spectator seating, change rooms, washrooms. You know, many of them are outdated, too small, not barrier-free. It lacks a walking track, dryland training space, and additional storage, things that would be found in a contemporary facility. Several stakeholders at a very early level have indicated an interest in working with the town, whether this is partnering more on a capital and operating, like a lease space opportunity. That was the Georgian Bay Mati Council. They currently operate out of space in Midland, and they're actively seeking a new location and feel that they would have potentially an interest in this. Ascannonia Senior Center, Curling Club, Sports Hall Fame all act as tenants locally or in Midland, and they would be looking for those arrangements to continue in some version or another. And then your municipal, surrounding municipalities, Tay, Tiny, Midland, and Tay want to continue to be involved, recognizing that regional planning makes everyone stronger. So with that, the key components that we are suggesting would be amenities that would form a base design. And certainly, many of these can only be delivered under a new recreation center. Again, we'll still be looking at the existing ones and opportunities to improve them. But, you know, space is more limited, so it would not enable many of these components to move forward. So ice rinks, either one or two, an indoor track, gymnasium, flexible multipurpose space, tenant space, support space, and potentially partner space. And that would be sort of, you know, looking for that external funding, sustainable funding, coming from elsewhere. Components that are not under consideration at this time, and, you know, at some point, we do have to draw a line and scope this to something that would, that we feel is fitting of local needs. An indoor pool, you know, based on really, first and foremost, you have your waypoint center and an agreement with them, and that seems to be meeting the large scale of needs. Indoor pools are common requests in any municipality of any size, but they come with a very significant price tag, both capital and definitely annual operation. So that is one, you know, unless we hear otherwise directed, otherwise, we think needs are being met there. Same would go for a fitness or wellness center. This would be more of an equipment-based facility. Certainly, you could do a lot with, like, program space and multi-use studio space. That's not what we're talking about here. It's more of the gym-based model. Indoor sports field, like a turf field, we understand that's been looked at in the past and not supported. Outdoor sports fields, we understand those needs are currently largely being met through your park system. Public library, arts culture center, those are not components of our work to date. So thank you for your patience. Where do we go from here? Just to wrap up, we're finalizing the needs assessment. We'll be meeting shortly. We'll be looking to set up a meeting with our steering committee to gain their input as well. I will be evaluating those options that are put forward, and that includes looking at costs, partnership considerations, location considerations, and then back in front of council and out to the public on a draft study. So with that, I would welcome your feedback. I will stop sharing, but can go back to any of these slides, should you wish.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Very, very good presentation. It's probably enlightened most members of council, but maybe I would ask any members of council if they have any questions of Steve. Counselor Vadimovkary?
Thank you, worship. Good presentation, Steve. I didn't hear anything mentioned about the Brian Orsard Hall. So the banquet facility on the upstairs of the current arena. Can you just tell us just how that fits in? I didn't see it covered in any of the slides. Thank you.
Good question, and definitely a facility that has its users and serves us as really the community's largest gathering space at present. We would look at opportunities to replace, you know, if we're looking at a new rec center, you would need some form of hall and gathering space. So it would have been, it will be considered through when we say multipurpose and program space. It gets lumped in under that heading. Whether you need the same level of space and level of finish, that would need to be determined, because if a gymnasium moves forward, that certainly, space-wise, can accommodate many things, but it would have a bit of a different vibe and function than a hall. But that is definitely something that is still under consideration.
Questions to Steve on Counselor Rose?
Thank you, worship. Good job, Steve. Looking forward to seeing the rest. I did have the same question as Counselor Vadimovkary, but you covered that well. Just one little thing is, on the Penetang Machine Curling Club page, you have repairs and replacement over the next 20 years at $839 million. I just wonder if that was maybe a bit of a typo, just so we know for next time?
Well, you know, we put one in to get your attention, and thanks for finding it, yeah. Now, that would be $1,000.
Very good, very good. Okay, so if there's nothing further from Steve, again, Steve, oh, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, worship. Steve, just a question regarding, and by the way, the Curling Club now has a new plant, so just so you can take that off your list. As far as local clubs and fitness centers closing and waypoint, I'm not sure how long that option for us to use is there. Is this plan fluid enough to include, say, for instance, a pool or a fitness center?
I'll go back to, one of our guiding principles was to be flexible. And, you know, if you're looking at a new location and a new recreation center, we would always recommend, particularly in growing communities, where, you know, this is going to be, you're not going to do this twice in the course of the next 20 years, right? So you're going to hopefully secure enough land and design it such that some sort of phasing and/or expansion potential exists. You know, we can certainly, we have plenty of experience as our architect partner in designing pools. You know, they tend to sort of start at, you know, 10 to 15 million for a full aquatic center, and they tend to cost in a range of $500,000 a year to operate just for the pool. So, you know, that puts into perspective probably the agreement that you do have with Waypoint. That said, if that does not become an option, you know, if that falls off the table in the future, you know, I think you want to have those opportunities. So, you know, the study doesn't say no to these things, rather, it prioritizes what those needs might be, tries to give you some advice to make sure that you get another, you get 66 years out of, you know, the facility that comes after the PMCC.
Any further questions from Steve? No, they're being done, Steve. Then we look forward to the next round, and we appreciate your coming and being with us this evening. Excellent report.
Thank you.
I should maybe ask our Director of Recreation, Sherry, since she has a lot of input and has had a lot of input with working with Steve, if she has anything that she would like to add to this evening's presentation?
No, I think that Steve did a thorough presentation from staff perspective. We've been very comfortable with the service that Monteith Brown is providing us thus far and are confident in their abilities and the homework that they're doing on behalf of the municipality.
Very good, thank you, Madam Recreation Director. So with that, then, we will move on to our next presentation, and that is the presentation from Charles Duquette, Official Plan Penetang Machine Song Presentation. And we, I believe, have Tina and Helena both with us, and I was wondering if either one of you would like to make any kind of a presentation to the municipality?
We, sorry, your worship, sorry to interrupt. We do actually have the song available to play. We're going to play it through YouTube. I just didn't know if you wanted the members of the Duquette family to speak first, and then you have an opportunity to speak and play the song.
Actually, I was going to speak on it and have the song played after.
Okay.
So to begin with, I think I would just ask the Duquette family, Tina or Helena, or whoever else is with.
I believe it was Tina. Tina called me today, and she was going to represent the family. So I think she's online, and she can maybe turn her camera on and her microphone on, and.
Okay, Tina, you were there?
Yes, I have my microphone on. I don't know if the video is working. I'm pressing on it, but it says the host disabled it.
We have your voice.
There you go.
There you are, there you are. You're awesome.
Good evening, your worship, and good evening, Town Council members. I want to thank you all for having invited my family and myself to the Town Council meeting this evening. We are very humbled by the fact that you all have adopted the Penetang Machine Song, written and performed and recorded by my dad, the late Charles Chuck Duquette. There are no words to express how we feel. It would be amazing to have him here. I'm sure he would be beyond grateful and thankful for this. My dad, he loved his little town of Penetang Machine, and he'd always say, there's no better place in the entire world to live. And with his music gifts and his guitar playing, he, in 2009, he put down on paper all of the different words that came to mind, and he was a history buff, so he incorporated that into what you hear or you're about to hear in terms of the Penetang Machine Song. He kept it historically accurate, and I was always quite amazed to see how he brought the whole entire melodic component together. And I'm proud of him. So in 2012, I had him come to the recording studio that I record my music at, and it's with Bob Gilbert in Midland, Ontario. And Bob always said my dad was a musician's musician, so he was fighting colon cancer at the time at stage four, and we lost him six months later, but I am so grateful. He got in there, and it was a one-take deal. He sang it twice, played it twice, but they took the first take, and it became the CD. So we, about five years ago, my brother-in-law, David Brunel, had put a proposal together, thinking that because of the historic accuracy of the song, because of what it meant to my dad, because of many factors, that it might be something that the Town Council would consider to be an official song. And now, it has come to fruition. And again, we cannot tell you how thankful and humble we are because of this. So I guess the thing is, we want to also pay it forward. So our family has been hit with cancer, and we are so grateful to the Georgian Bay Cancer Support Group and Candlelighters for all of the work and help they do. So all of the proceeds, the family would pay for the production of all the CDs, and the cost is $5. And I think we could arrange it so that it's online purchase or even maybe at the town location to purchase, and all of the proceeds would go to the Georgian Bay Cancer Support Group. So with that said, again, I humbly thank you all for accepting and adopting my dad's Penetang Machine Song as the official song of our beautiful little town.
Thank you very much, Tina. We just want to thank you for joining us, you and the rest of your family. We want to take this opportunity to let you know officially that our council has unanimously voted to make the Penetang Machine Song, written by the late Charles Duquette, the official song for Penetang Machine. The lyrics are beautiful, and we hope that you find joy and pride in seeing this accomplishment for your family. And so with that, we would like to play the song now for everyone. So Sarah, if you would, please?
It has a history of 10,000 years or more. When the ice first retreated, leaving the hills and the beautiful shores, the native people called her the white rolling sand. That's how the name of our little town began. Lumberjacks and farmers had cleared away the trees, taking room for settlers to open up this community. We, as their descendants, will always proudly be the heart of this town, heaven history. Penetang Machine, prettiest town I've ever seen. Your shores are so inviting for people who've never seen them. Your beautiful little harbor and your white rolling sands. People will stay up for hours at the beauty of this land. Passing by the angels entering into town, look at all the beauty of the nature's left around. Down at the harbor, gazing upon the land. See the beautiful steeple of the church they call Satan. I was born in the summer, 1944. Lived all my life here, on the banks upon her shores. I will always love this pretty little town. No one will convince me there's a better place around. Then Penetang Machine, prettiest town I've ever seen. Your shores are so inviting for people who've never seen them. Your beautiful little harbor and your white rolling sands. them. Your beautiful little harbor and your white rolling sands. People will stare for hours at the beauty of this land. People will stare for hours at the beauty of this land.
As I indicated, as I indicated before, beautiful song and beautiful words. Something that I can actually be proud of is the fact that Charles Chuck Duquette was my second cousin.
Oh, that's great. I learned about that actually just recently, and I thought, that's fantastic. We're all related, it seems, huh?
Yes, his grandmother on his father's side was my father's sister.
Oh, wow. So then that means we're related too, Your Worship.
Well, you guys are my third cousins.
There you go. I just wanted to make a clarification. Thank you for playing this video. That actually was the family video. The actual video that was made to go with the words of the song. It's the one that is posted online and on the website. That one there, I know that it came from my personal YouTube page, so I appreciate you showing it, because it does show my dad and his life and his family. But the words, so that all of the Penetangusine citizens could appreciate, the true video of the song would show everything from the harbor to the angels to the steeple of Saint Anne's, et cetera.
Yeah.
So we can share that on, people can see that online and stuff like that.
Good show. And again, to the Duquette family, thank you again for your kind donation of this song to our town.
Thank you. Good evening.
Very good. Now with that, we will move on to adoption of minutes not already confirmed. So minutes of council, September 9, 2020, special counsel, August 27, 2020, that the following minutes of council meetings be confirmed and adopted and circulated. Counselors, September 9, and special counsel, August 27. Mover and a sec, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Sinema, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. Consent agenda, we have none. Matters for consideration, first is the memo to council, re-small business week. October 18 to 24, 2020, that council declare the week of October 18 to 24, 2020, in the town of Penetangusine as Small Business Week in support of local businesses, and that in celebration, the town recognized through communications in support of the Love My Local Campaign by the Economic Development Corporation of North Simcoe. And I believe and I understand that all members of council have done that. I see Mr. Counselor Mayat shaking no.
It will be done tomorrow.
We're working on it. We're working on it.
I'll be done tomorrow.
Okay. Well, that is, that is a good thing. Do I need to mover and a sec on this one, Madam Clerk? Okay, mover. Counselor Mayat, seconded, Counselor Sinema, all in favor. Okay, moving on to Penetangusine Public Library Board Appointment. Chantelle Switzer, that the mayor's appointment of Chantelle Switzer to the Penetangusine Public Library Board for the remainder of the term be approved. Mover and a sec. Counselor Vadebalkar and Deputy Mayor, all in favor. Okay, and that is Carrie. Now, we go to the shoreline condition update two and remediation, RCS 2021, that any expenses related to the shoreline remediation work at McGivern Point be funded through the Asset Management Reserve at the end of 2020, should the savings achieved in the parks' operating budget be insufficient, up to a maximum of $14,246, and that approximately $25,000 from the wharf reserve be used to complete a shoreline assessment and detailed design work for repairs and on sidewalk at the wharf, as outlined in the staff report, and finding that $200,000 be reallocated in the 2021 capital budget for reconstruction of the sidewalk at the wharf in 2021. And so with that, I would probably ask our director to give us the details.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the shoreline condition update is being brought to you, obviously, for, to expedite straight to council to address a few issues that we want to rectify before winter arrives. The longer we wait, the further we anticipate the costs to remediate the issues to be, and the greater the damage that will result. So the one is McGivern Point around the statue off Legacy Walkway. There's a photo included for council. A couple of significant weather events will continue to erode the soil that's there supporting the statue and some of the infrastructure around it, and we want to make sure that that's not jeopardized. We do believe that some of the savings that we've achieved this year in the parks' operating budget related to the fallout of the pandemic, that we'll be able to cover those costs. And if there's any shortfalls, that we would cover it through the Asset Management Reserve. The larger price tag item and the one that has greater safety concern, of course, is the sidewalk that runs from the parking lot along the front of the dock lunch, which is municipal property, to the launch ramp. So there's a concrete structure and sidewalk that attaches, two docks attached to. So one of it is our floating system that has slips on it. The other is our main launch ramp dock, so it's starting to slant forward and has have all been undermined for weather activity. So we're wanting to, recommending to council that we move forward to have the engineering works done this year, the design work, so that we could move forward with having it remediated in the spring prior to our heavy wharf and boating season. I did receive, there was a new information that was brought to light this afternoon. Today, our harbor master, his contract ends Friday, so today he was having the box uninstalled from the mainland. They noted that the concrete section on the opposing side of the launch ramp is also starting to slant towards the water and dip, which it looks like it's being undermined as well by the high waters. So we, I'd like to propose to council an amendment to the motion that's before you, that we increase the amount of $25,000 to $35,000, and that we expand the scope of that engineering work to include both sides of the launch ramp. If council could certainly wait and look at that at a future date, however, there are likely, we believe there would be cost savings in addressing both now, particularly if you go to construction next year and mobilize and bring units in to rectify those issues. So that's the Coles Notes version of the report, and I'm obviously happy to field any questions or concerns that council may have.
Hey, members of council, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Worship. Question through to Sherry. Sherry, the remediation work that would be done down at McGivern Point, would that be done with large boulders? Is that what is being planned, or do you know? I was down there today, and certainly it is eroding quite badly, so we really need to do something with it. But I was just wondering what type of work would be done?
Certainly. At this point, Morden's, they don't, they believe they can do the work this spring and just do the work from the shore as opposed to barging equipment, which would be more costly. And they would use boulders to make it look the same all the way around the point.
Very good. And they'll do that this fall?
This, yeah.
Good. Okay, thank you. No, absolutely. I would support the initiative. It needs to be done. We've got a beautiful park. There were tons of people walking in the park today, and we do need to keep it up. Thank you.
Further questions from any members of council? Counselor Vadebalkar?
Thank you, Worship. I support both initiatives. I had a question for the director. Earlier this year, I asked about the possibility of replacing some of the Severn Sound Action Plan signs down at the beachfront that had been vandalized through graffiti and whatnot. And I was told then that perhaps if there was money left over, that the department could look at replacing those signs. And I'm just wondering if, if any action's been taken on that, and will there be money left over to, to replace those signs in the near future? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, through Your Worship to Counselor Vadebalkar. We, I did follow up with the Severn Sound Environmental Association, and it was an initiative that was done with public work, so I'm going to pass that off to Brian Murray, our Director of Public Works. We did connect midsummer or early fall, I believe, and Brian was taking it from there.
Further questions? Do we have any further questions from our director?
I didn't hear what he said. Sorry, I didn't hear. Sorry, Your Worship, I didn't hear what the Director of Public Works said.
The Director of Public Works? Well, I didn't hear what he said either. Brian?
Thank you, Your Worship, through to Counselor Vadebalkar. Sherry did follow up with me based on your conversation with her, and we're going to be getting replacement signs for those SSEA waterfront park revitalization signs replaced, and we'll be working with a local signing company to get those replaced.
Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Worship. A question for the director. Where are we reallocating the $200,000 from?
So through Your Worship to Counselor Cummings, we have to reevaluate the 2021 capital budget. We've had some preliminary discussions, but not formalized what our recommendations to council will be as of this time. So we will present our recommendations through the budget process for council's consideration. I would also like to, I should have noted earlier, the $200,000 is Greenland's estimation at this time of what the works will be. Those, you know, like other projects that involve engineering, that number will be refined as they actually do the detailed design work and investigate for their investigation.
Further questions? There being none, then we would ask for a mover and a sec. Counselor LaRose, Counselor Sinema, all in favor. That is Carrie. Moving on to D, awarding of the Fox Street Containerized Chemical Feed System. That Metcon, we awarded the tender for the supply and delivery of a prepackaged containerized chemical feed system for the Fox Street dechlorination system. The tender price for the prepackaged containerized chemical system is $187,104.27, including HST. Perhaps, Brian, do you have anything that you can add to this report?
Thank you, Worship. The Public Works Department has a capital project this year, which is the installation of a dechlorination system at the Fox Street sewage treatment plant, and that's to meet federal non-toxic affluent regulations for plants the size of Fox Street. And this is the main component of that project, which is the actual dechlorination system. But as I run in the report, there'll be various site works and various mechanical and electrical work to be done on site once it arrives. It's being brought forward directly to council to speed up the delivery process, because there is quite a lead time for the delivery of this piece of equipment, so we want to move forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any questions through to the Director of Public Works? There being none, I am mover and a sec, please. Counselor Mayat and Counselor Sinema, all in favor. That is Carrie. Moving on to 11, Presentation and Consideration of Report Committee of the Whole. Committee of the Whole report, September 9, 2020, that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Recreation and Community Services Section be approved. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with that? There being none, mover and a sec. Counselor LaRose and Counselor Sinema, all in favor. Carrie. And that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Planning and Development Services Section be approved. Any questions or concerns? There being none, mover and a sec. Deputy Mayor Dubois and Counselor Clu, all in favor. That's Carrie. And that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Transportation Environmental Services Section be approved. Questions, concerns? There being none, mover and a sec. Counselor Mayat and Counselor Vadebalkar, all in favor. Okay. That the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Finance and Corporate Services Section be approved. Questions or concerns? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Worship. I can't remember which most to touch here. I'd like to pull number 9B from this Committee of the Whole report for Finance and General Government. It's about the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Initiative. I wanted to pull a second attempt here to question why we're going to do this. In light of new information that I have or that I've researched on this group, we are paying into a membership that our Simcoe County already pays into, and-
Sir, Counselor Cummings, if you don't mind, what we will do is that we will move on the balance of the finance and corporate services, and then we will deal with the 9B. So can I have a mover and a sec on the balance of Counselor Vadebalkar and Counselor Cummings? All in favor. That is Carrie. Okay, now, Counselor Cummings, you may go 9B.
Thank you, Worship. In light of the information that I've received, and perhaps the CAO or the treasurer can give me, give more information on this, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Initiative have several members of Simcoe County being there in their membership of 2000. They also have Simcoe County. We have never had a report from Simcoe County regarding the Great Lakes Initiative, and our warden actually is a director on that particular board. And I was thinking that, I'm not sure why we're double dipping, we seem to do this all the time, rather than get the information from the county. I think there's eight or nine in the county that are actually members, and Simcoe County is as well. So just bringing it back again, just to have council's feelings on, should be really be investing in this, because we do not hear anything about it, nor do we have, I don't think you've ever been invited to a meeting, Your Worship, in Illinois, but that's, that's what I'm asking.
Okay. Do we have any, one with Deputy Mayor Dubois?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I know when we had this discussion a week or so ago, we thought that we would bring it to budget discussions, and I would like to see it stay there at this particular moment, would give us an opportunity to get some information together. I certainly will talk to Warden Cornell and other members that are presently members of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Initiative. We can gather some information. So I would hope the council not put a stop to this at this particular moment. I think that budget discussion- that budget discussions are going to be coming up very soon. And it would give us an opportunity to get some information together. So I would hope council would agree with that.
Thank you. You actually proposed that it will be an item for budget discussion, which is is fine. I know the fact that we belong to the St. Lawrence Great Lakes Initiative for quite a number of years. And I just, I don't recall why, when and why we actually pulled out. However, that's all stuff that we can round up together and get details on. And if Counselor Cummings, you have no problems that we just leave it and and that it will be part of discussions at budget time.
Your worship, I believe the the motion is that it's included in our operation budget.
That it is included in the operation budget now?
That it will be, if we pass this, it will be included in our operating, membership is included in our 2021 operating budget.
Okay. Madam Deputy Mayor, further comment?
Yes, thank you. I did feel that it was for discussion. So perhaps that should be made clear. I don't think the intent was to pass it that particular night. Maybe our CAO could clarify.
That's exactly where I was going. Mr. CAO, do you have a comment on this?
Thank you, worship. I believe, and I'm sure that our clerk probably can confirm, I'm kind of giving her a little bit of advance notice here. But I believe the motion that was passed, if I'm not mistaken, back on September 9, was that the membership for 2021's Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative be approved, and that the cost of $2,200 be included in the 2021 operating budget. So perhaps the clerk may have a recommendation or suggestion as to how we could ease that off a little bit so that, in fact, as the deputy mayor and I believe Counselor Cummings suggested, that it actually form part of the budget conversation as opposed to an automatic trigger to go out and and begin our membership process for 2021. Your worship, my suggestion would be that we we get some, get some thoughts from the clerk.
Madam clerk, can you give us some thoughts?
Thank you, your worship. So yes, I mean, right, essentially now, since this item has been pulled from the, from the Finance and Corporate Services balance, it's sort of open and free game. That that motion that was passed Committee of the Whole is no longer, unless we read it again, move it, second it, and carry it. So right now, we're in, we're in nothing mode. So we can, we can make a motion for whatever we would like. I can read what was, and a member of council can either ask me to create something or come up with something that they'd like to see. I don't want to presume. But in the meeting previously, it was that the, the report be received for information, that the 2021 membership for the St. Lawrence City Initiative 2021 be approved, and that the, finally, that the cost of $2,200 for 2020, 2021, membership be included in the 2021 operating budget. So if what I'm hearing is that we don't necessarily want to approve it, we want to continue the conversation during our budget process, then I suggest that we move and second that motion.
Okay. So some of the motion that is there you're talking about now?
No, we would be, we would be creating a new motion. So if what council's saying is they want to consider that, I can, I can craft something quickly.
So then could you therefore create a motion in regards to the application of the Great Lakes Initiative, that it be included in the 2021 budget deliberations? Something to that effect? Counselor Clu, you have your card up.
Thank you, worship. Might I suggest that we move a motion almost identical to this one, but we strike out the second paragraph. And then the third paragraph would read, and that the cost of $2,200 for a 2021 membership be considered in the 2021 operating budget? I think that would cover off the fact that we would have this discussion further.
Yes, I agree. And I see the clerk's nodding her head that yes, that would work. So with that, are you able, Madam clerk, to leave that?
Certainly. So it'd be that the FIN 2020-18, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative Report be received for information. And finally, that the cost of $2,200 for a 2021 membership be included in the 2020, 2021 operating budget discussion.
Okay, so with that, mover? Counselor Sanama, and seconded by Deputy Mayor, so all in favor? Okay, that is carried. All right, this brings us down to Presentations, Considerations of Reports, Special Committees, there are none. Motions of which notice has been previously given, there are none. Notices of motion, there are none. Consideration of bylaws, you have bylaw 2020-45 being a bylaw to appoint the municipal bylaw enforcement officers for the town of Penitentang Machine, road patrol equipment operator, and that the council of town of Penitentang Machine introduces the following bylaw, 2025-45, and that the bylaw be read the first time, deemed to be read a second time, a third time, and carried. All in favor? Carried.
Sorry, I didn't get a mover or a seconder for that.
Mover and a seconder.
You're keeping me on my toes tonight, your worship.
Hey, Counselor Cummings and Counselor Sanama, all in favor. Okay. Question period from media and the public. I don't know if there's anybody out there. I see Rogers, but I don't know if they have any announcements and inquiries. Do we have any announcements or inquiries? Okay, then we will move on to the confirmation bylaw, that the confirmation bylaw, 2020-46, be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Mover or a seconder? Counselor Sanama and Deputy Mayor, all in favor. Okay, and with that, a mover to adjourn. Counselor Cummings. So with that, we are adjourned. And I think I had a little thing that came over my screen with a request that if we could take a five-minute break before moving in to our Committee of the Whole. So we will take a five-minute break. I could actually use one myself. One is back, so we will carry on with our Committee of the Whole call to order and move on with the approval of the agenda. So Committee of the Whole Agenda, October 14, 2020, the recommended action is that the Committee of the Whole Agenda for 2020 be approved as presented. A mover and a seconder. Counselor LaRose, Counselor Sanama, all in favor. That is carried. Declaration of Vacunary Interest, if anyone so has, they can make it now or at the given time. Presentations and Delegations, all sections, we have none. Council Information Package, Council Information Package, September 18, 2020, October 14, 2020, Recommended Action, that the Council Information Packages of September 18, 2020 and October 14, 2020, Haven't Been Given Due Consideration Be Received For Information. Does anyone have anything that they wish to pull from the SIP? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. I've lost my agenda for the moment, but I do think it was 3D, the reference to the alcohol, letter that was sent out by myself as chair of the Simcoe Muskogee District Health Unit. The rules have changed from the government. And I just want perhaps to send it off to staff to upgrade our alcohol policy.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have anything from the SIP? There being none, a mover and a seconder, please? Or did I already get a mover and a seconder? No. Okay, Counselor Cummings and Counselor Vatavalkar, all in favor. That is carried. Moving on to six, Section A, Transportation and Environmental Services, and I pass it on to Counselor Mayat.
Thank you, your worship. Consent Agenda, Recommended For Action, that the Fall Consent Agenda items that have been given due to consideration be received for information. Item one is the Paillet de Page Drinking Water System Inspection Report 2020. Second item is the Town of Penitentang Machine Class Environmental Assessment Schedule B, Fuller Avenue Report, a Fuller Avenue, Robert Street East Inspection Upgrade Project, Notice of Study Assessment on 23rd September 2020. Do we have anything we want to discuss on this? Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wanting to discuss the Fuller Avenue, Robert Street intersection.
Okay, Brian, go ahead. What did you want to know, Counselor LaRose?
Well, I wanted to know, I wasn't too thrilled the last time because the the price went up by hundreds of thousands of dollars for for no regular reason that anybody could figure out at the time. And my actual question is, during this process, did they look at, instead of putting a signalized intersection, did they look at a three-way stop? As I travel all over the the county and the area, I look at an intersection like Concession 12 and County Road 6, the main section of Perkins Field. It receives more traffic at that intersection than Fuller and Robert does. They do that with a four-way stop, so it would keep traffic moving and and save us probably $300,000. So I just wanted to make sure that during that process, that that option is going to get looked at.
Brian?
Thank you, through to Counselor LaRose. The intersection upgrades project, the signalization of Fuller and Robert was recommended as part of a traffic impact study that was completed as part of the St. Andrews Village subdivision development as a supporting document. The traffic volumes and turning volumes at that intersection at the current, at the present time, and given the growth of that intersection over the next 20 years, necessitated the the installation of a the traffic signal. And this is compounded by the fact that both Robert and Fuller Avenue are arterial roads, which are high-traffic, high-volume roads, which while the stop, the stop-controlled intersection that Counselor LaRose is recommending would be, would be an option that could be considered, given the volume of traffic and the turning volumes and the truck traffic at this intersection, it was recommended as part of that study, that signalization would be the best option, given the traffic and the the future growth in that area.
Bear Lou? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that basically I have to agree with our director that the best, the best method there is the signalize method. There is a, quite a volume of traffic coming out of Wake Point and the super jail, and most of the traffic comes from that end. And being a three-way stop, I don't know it would work all that well with that much traffic coming mostly from the one end at certain times of day. And then we also know that there will be another subdivision in that area coming up. Now, Counselor LaRose mentioned something of savings in the 300,000. With the additional cost that was incurred because of missing the purchase of some land that was not, what what's the final number, Brian?
In terms of the, the construction process, we will need to to find out what the property requirements are through this class environmental study before we have a clearer picture as to what the total construction costs are. So we'll need to know what the detailed design and the property requirements are before a detailed construction cost estimate can be provided.
Do we have any more questions to our director? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you. Brian, is that going to include removing that gas meter or the the gas station that's there?
Through to Counselor Cummings, the the gas meter that's in the side, the east side of that intersection, all options in terms of the positioning of the turning lanes and the through lanes will be considered. And the relocation of that gas meter would be one of those costs that would be considered through this class environmental study. It will also factor into all of the utility relocations required and factor in the financial costs as well as the environmental costs and the technical costs and the operational costs, and come up with a recommended solution.
And Deputy Mayor Duble had a question?
Yes, I thought that there was a reference to $100,000 for this project. It had started off maybe at 50 or 60, and then there was an extra lot of money that was needed. Brian, could you explain that?
Yeah, through, through to the deputy mayor, the initial design estimate for the project was $50,000. The, through the design phase of the project, our engineers identified that the, the need to, to acquire property as part of the project, which bumped it up to a Schedule B environmental, class environmental assessment, which necessitated a full review of the Class EA environment, which added another $50,000 to the project to complete the study.
Do we have any more questions for our director? Okay, no more questions on the two items. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Mover, Counselor Clu, and a seconder, Counselor Sanama, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, and oppose? Two, I guess, and carried. Thank you. Now, the, where am I at here? Matter of consideration, on-street parking on Church Street, follow-up report, I guess it's from Yol Street to Simcoe Street, RDS 202011, RDS 202011, recommended for action, that the staff report be reviewed for information. And the staff recommended, recommendation of option one, being that no street parking be provided to be approved. Do you open for discussion? Or Madam clerk?
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to let you know, and this doesn't normally happen, that's why I'm, I'm doing this, but I did receive a message from the Dupuy family, which I think is, is the family that put in a question related to this, this report. And they, they've sent me something they'd like communicated to council. And of course, that's only on your permission as the chair. Otherwise, I could read it during the questions from the media and the public. But it is the way that our public are communicating with us. They do have the opportunity to send me as the clerk information. So I just thought I would bring that to your attention, and you can let me know whether you'd like me to read it and when and when you'd like me to read it.
Would the rest of council like to hear the, the letter? Yes. Go ahead, Madam clerk.
Okay, so just to read what, what was written?
Yep, please.
Okay, it just says, this is unfair, and they are being penalized for a mistake the town made when they put in the new road and curbs and took away parking on both sides. It's the same situation measurement-wise as other streets in town that have parking on both sides. If they leave, this is status quo, then the other streets should be removed. Street parking, sorry, street parking should be removed. There should be a solution as long as, as long as paying tax, taxpaying residents. Sorry, I was garbled there. Sorry, I was garbled there.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I guess the floor is over for discussion. Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just about the report, to me, I don't think it's any new news. I believe that Counselor Vadimov Kor myself asked, well, I asked about what about Toronto traffic or metropolitan traffic, where they have streets that are just as narrow as the one that's happened to be our little lemmuses there, and they still have one-side parking. We talked about a rolling curb. That hasn't been discussed. And at further looking at the design drawings, there are only three places that are actually any more than a three percent or two-and-a-half percent grade on that side of the road. There's three driveways, I believe, that go up to about a sixteen percent grade. So I'm not sure why we don't have enough room there. Between the telephone poles and the street, there's about two point three meters in most cases. So I'm just kind of wondering, I don't think it's enough. I think we need to explore those options as well. And we don't need a new whole new major design to to come up with that. And by the way, the plow drawing on Church Street, when we first start plowing the roads, that wing is up. I was the wingman for years, and that truck can get into whatever spaces it wants to.
Do we have any more question for our director? Counselor Vadabalkan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not be supporting the recommendation as it's written. I think that we should be proceeding with option two. I've spoken on this matter at a previous committee of the whole. It was put on referred. It's back to us now. I still think that there's another solution. Counselor Cummings has identified one possible solution. I think there that may work. There may be other solutions, so I'd be prepared to support option two, which is to do a design and look at some some curb, not curb parking, but side parking on the east side of of Church Street. But anyway, that's those are my comments.
Do we have any more discussion on this matter? Mr. Mayor?
I guess my question would be through to our director is that what Counselor Vadimov Kor is proposing as option two requires some type of design or engineering. And the question I would have right at the moment is, what kind of costs would we be looking at for that?
Through to your worship, can can you, I lost the the last bit of your your comment there. Can you repeat the last portion of the comment?
Yes, what I was wanting to find out, Brian, is that what kind of cost would we be looking at for the design alone on on widening this road? For widening it, and as curves, as was discussed, on the one side, the cemetery side, would naturally require curb siding and probably some retaining walls. So before we get into all of that, what kind of cost is involved in just getting the design, the design work?
Through to your worship, I provided an estimate in the report of about approximately thirty-five thousand to do a design for option two. So that would provide us with the design drawings that we could go out to tender, do any utility relocation work that may be required as part of the design. In looking at the street section that as it's currently constructed, the sidewalk on the the western portion of the of the road is but up against or very close to the the curb. So any potential for on-street parking, I would recommend on the east side, particularly in the in the location of the the cemetery. That would provide probably the best opportunity at probably the least amount of cost to provide a parking aisle while maintaining two lanes of traffic through that that intersection. It is quite steep on the on the east side, so it would require some retaining walls to be installed along that section. And any kind of drainage work, storm sweer work to capture the drainage coming off that hill would be would be required and outlined in that design. So the estimate in my my report being thirty-five thousand would be presented, and if that's the option council would would wish to go towards in solving this issue, I would be putting that forward to budget considerations this year.
Do we have, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. So the 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 answer to off-street parking in that section of Church Street would actually mean the widening of Church Street from Burke Street to Yo Street. And so the thing is that if we're looking at cost of thirty-five thousand for the design work, then follows that the actual contract to do the work, and if at which time that comes about, and and I I'm sure widening Church Street from Burke to Yo would be quite costly. And if we saw then, when it came before us, that the cost was too exuberant, then we've spent thirty-five thousand dollars for that thing.
Okay, any more questions? Counselor Vadabalkan?
Thank you. His worship has jumped to the conclusion about widening Church Street. I don't know if that's required or not. From my standpoint, it would just be where you have a barrier curb on the east side. It would be lowering that barrier curb to a rolled curb and providing may maybe two feet of asphalt on top of that curb where there's a grass portion before it starts to rise, so that people could just pull over on that rolled curb and park on the on basically what would be a shoulder. I don't see anything fancier than that. But again, I'm not an engineer, so that's why I thought that that would make sense for an engineer to have a look at it, look at the options, and then come back with recommendations, at least we know. And we can then deal with it after we've got some options to consider. Thank you.
And next person, I think it was Counselor Sanamah.
Thanks very much. I just, I know it seems like a very unusual option, but the option three of going to the one-way, the one-way in that particular area, I know that's a very high-traffic road, but in that regard, would it maybe help to divert the traffic onto Fuller, which is where the traffic lights are going to be? And the the cost associated with that is about twenty-five hundred dollars, and it looks like it would then allow enough room to do the parking. It may be inconvenient, but overall, is is that not an option that would be the kind of the easiest fix? It's just a thought, Brian.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Counselor Mayat, I I certainly, I don't think I would I would support a one-way on on that section of road for the simple reason that if we were doing a one-way, it would have to be from Burke Street to Yo, and then the detour for a one-way would be very long. If you're coming down Church Street and you wanted to go, you'd have to go down Yo all the way down to Fox and back and around. So I don't think that that would be a a solution. If I were to support anything, perhaps if the members of council feel that they want to spend thirty-five thousand dollars on a study, then I might support that and see where that brings us in cost-wise to do what is required for off-street parking. I can honestly say at the moment, I don't care what anyone says. There is no way that you can do off-street parking the way it is.
Okay, Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Oh, I'm on layer there. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly would support the the redesign, but there's no need to redesign the whole street. We've already had that. We have detailed drawings of those designs. All we need is to design a curb and a parking area. So even if we just do the floating curb, and we go, as Counselor Vadimov Kor said, go two feet, we remember, we've shortened the length of that, or pardon me, the width of that road. It was with with shoulders, the right width of road. We made it six point five meters. And so I think it's it's we are obliged to make sure some room down in there. The only street, or pardon me, the only section of the street along Church right now, right from town all the way to a mental health center, that's a a laneway and not a road. So I think we've, I mean, thirty-five thousand is probably really expensive, considering we've got the drawings there now. We just need the rolling curb and asphalt area. I think there's ample room there to put a even a gravel path off the off the road.
Do we have any more questions for our director? Counselor Clu?
All right, Mr. Chair, nothing for the director. Just a comment.
Okay. And I think Mayor, Deputy Mayor Dubo had a question.
Yes, Brian, I guess my question is, if in fact, can we do what is being suggested without hiring an engineer or consultants to design this rolling curb and just bare, very bare minimum, can we do that without further professional opinions?
Your Director?
Through to the Deputy Mayor, certainly, we we would have the expertise in-house. Like myself, I I could do I could do the design myself. It's just the the time that we would require to do the the design drawings and and the tender documentation to do that. I would also want to to make sure that we're constructing it in accordance with all of the applicable design standards.
Yes.
There could be retaining walls required. It is particularly steep in this one section of the road. So there may be the need for retaining wall designs, which would be out of my expertise to to do. That's why I'm making the the estimates. It could very well be high. It is a conservative estimate, but I would recommend that we get an engineering design if if that is the route that council wants to take in this this particular project.
Thank you.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, I guess we have to put a motion on the floor for option one. If it's defeated, then we can go with option two. If not, then somebody can put a motion on the floor to do this rolling curb in the shoulders. Is that the way we have to proceed?
Well, you don't have a mover and seconder for the motion. You did read it, but we don't have a mover and a seconder for those, so it's not on the floor technically. Counselor Vadabalkor did speak to moving option number two. So if someone is looking to to do that, they could. But certainly, if you want to, you know, read that motion and call for a mover and seconder, you can do that.
Okay, so then the the recommended for action that the staff report be received for information, that the staff recommendation option number one to be a non-street parking to be provided as approved. I need a mover? No mover, no seconder? To get it going?
I got a mover.
Ah, we got a mover. Mr. Mayor, a seconder?
Oh, heck, I'll second.
Second, the the seconder Deputy Mayor Dubo. Okay, so who's all in favor for option one?
I will support option one.
So we got two for option one against? One, two, three, four. So four, oh, five, sorry, five against two, so the motion has been defeated. So go ahead, Counselor Clu.
Mr. Chair, so we know that they're very upset. I'm I am one of the residents in town who also lives on a street without street parking, and I I don't even have a sidewalk, so there is that. There are other places in town that have this problem. However, I wasn't willing to support option one as the status quo, because I'd like to see us consider option three, at least as a test pilot for one year until we can further consider option two. I'm not willing to start spending thirty-five thousand dollars for one segment of street, given what I mentioned before, that this isn't the only place in town. So I think we could consider option three on a temporary basis and see what the town residents feel about it. Those are my two cents to me.
Anybody else? Oh.
Sorry.
Does anybody else have any? Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, just trying to find the balance between a member of council moving an option or suggesting an option. So it's there's two members of council speaking of two other options and just trying to make sure I'm monitoring that.
Counselor Clu, are you putting the motion on the floor to move option three?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move for option three.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Counselor Sanamah? All in favor? Two opposed? Both. Five opposed. Okay, so that one's knocked out of the park also. Now, what are we doing? Counsel, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Mayat. Now, Counselor Vadabalkor was recommending or suggesting option two. I wonder, Madam Clerk, could you read option two for us, please?
Madam Clerk?
Sorry, the motion would simply, this motion would simply just say option two being, so but I'd ask that actually the Director of Public Works explain option two, because it's not included in my agenda package. I'd have to pull up that exact report to find what option two is.
Ryan, can you tell us what option two is?
You, your worship, option two, being that the town completes a detailed engineering design and construction of an on-street parking aisle on Church Street, and I would add between Yo Street and Burke Street.
So I guess Counselor Mayat would be asking Counselor Vadabalkor if he wants to move that.
So option two, to complete the detailed engineering design and construction, off-street parking from Church to Yo. And the detailed design will cost approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to complete the construction's cost, and will be known until the design is complete. Is that the one we're going with?
Yes. Mr. Mr. Chair, sorry, I wasn't suggesting from from Burke to Yo. I wasn't suggesting. I was suggesting perhaps a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet along that section of Church Street in the vicinity of seventy Church Street. That's it. There's not, that's quite a stretch of road that would require significant alteration to the curb structure, which would be a significant cost. My interest was just to address the specific issue that's been brought to our attention that has been a longstanding matter before council. So whatever it is, it's a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet. That was my interest. Thank you.
Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could get Brian and his staff to do a preliminary drawing of some of the discussions that have taken place here tonight. Bring that back to council to look at, to see whether it's seven parking spots, six parking spots. You know, I I don't think we need to do the whole block, but if we could look at a preliminary drawing to see what a rollover curb would be to get a few cars off the road in that general vicinity, then with that preliminary drawing, we could decide whether we want to go out to an engineering firm or not.
Okay. Your Director, any suggestions of that, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We could certainly drop up a preliminary concept drawing as Thank you, Mr. Chair, we could certainly drop up a preliminary concept drawing as Counsel of Rose has indicated, to give council an estimate to the number of parking spaces that could be allowed within that area adjacent to the cemetery in the vicinity of Seventy Church Street.
Counsel Vadabankor?
I think that's an excellent idea by Counsel Rose, and so from my standpoint, if this means it's a referral back to staff, so that the Director can prepare what he's just outlined, then I'd be happy to either move that or second it, however Counsel Rose wants to proceed.
Counsel Rose?
Either way is fine with me, Mr. Chair, I would be happy to make that motion that this item be referred back to staff for a preliminary drawing for the section across the road from the vicinity of Seventy Church Street.
I'm happy to second it.
So we got a seconder? Gee, do you want to read that motion, Madam Clerk, or you got it all down, we all understand?
Well, when something's referred back to staff, generally it's just refer back to staff, I think our Director of Public Works has the information that he needs to return to the next meeting with the updated information.
So we don't need to pass this, we got a mover, a seconder?
We still need to take the vote, yeah, we have a mover and a seconder, and we still need to take the vote to refer it back to staff.
All in favor? One, two, three. So we got one, two, three, four, five, opposed? And two opposed, and it's carried. Okay. Next item, B2, the Midland Penetang Machine Transit Route Change, RDS 2020-23, recommended for action that the proposed change outlined within the staff report to the Penetang Machine Transit Route to be approved. I don't know if everybody looked at it, just basically changing the route a little bit around, if they wanted any more information, there are directors here, so. Can I have a mover for this? Counsel Rose, seconder, Counsel of the Cummings, any discussion on it? All in favor? God, I think I'm losing my crowd here, I think I got five or six, yeah, I got six, carried. Item number three, the extension of agreement with Dakid Labi, for the radio antenna and equipment for the Centennial Elevator Tower, W 202001, recommend for action that the council approve the renewal of the agreement with Dakid Labi, for the radio antenna and equipment for the Centennial Water Tower at Twenty-Two Centennial Drive to be approved for five years, and direct the staff for bringing forward the necessary bylaw for this agreement. And, oops, sorry, and that the agreement include revised license of two thousand three hundred dollars plus applicable tax for the annual payment of the town Penetang Machine. Everybody read the report? This is something that comes up every five years, I guess. Can I have a mover? Deputy Mayor and Counselor Sanama, any discussion? All in favor? Pass, thank you. Okay, and the proposal of five-year preventative road maintenance plans, plan, the RDS 202024, recommended for action that the proposed five-year penalty road maintenance plan be approved in principle, and that the purpose of the funding increase is to plan to be, oh, missing a word here, missing a word, okay, brought forward to council approval during the 2021 budget process. You can have a mover for this? Counsel Vadabankor, Counsel Rose, any discussion on it, everybody read the report? Counsel Vadabankor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to commend the Director on the report, I thought it was an excellent report, I appreciate, I appreciate the effort that went in and the, and the proposed improvements to the various roads identified in the report, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Any more discussion on this matter? Okay, all in favor? Oops, Counsel Cummings, do you have a question? Go ahead, Counsel Cummings.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, over to the Director. I was driving down Jury Drive today, and it's completely fallen apart around the gates entering into the park, is there any, I didn't see anything as far as maintenance or upgrades for that road, and I think it's a really important road, since we do have tourists coming down there all the time, so I'm just not sure where that is in the plan, Brian, I didn't see it in this five-year plan.
Thank you, through to Counselor Cummings, that's something that we can definitely look to add into the plan, Counselor Cummings, I can speak to the road supervisor, and we can definitely look to add that in the plan, whether it falls in the one or two or three year timeframe, but we can definitely add that, and it's being brought forward for council consideration, so if there's any amendments, we can bring that forward at a later date.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Just for clarification, Brian, the road at Jury Drive, that Counsel Cummings is speaking about, my understanding that we end at the gate?
Correct, that's correct, your worship.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Okay, all, I got a mover and a seconder, you got that, yeah, all in favor? Okay, pass. Now for the referral for upcoming agenda, that the Transportation and Environment Service Section endorsed the following additional and existing referral, upcoming agenda and staff. We have three items, the Church Street Parking, the Pill Street Snow Removal Site remediation, and the Accessible Transit Option. Do we want to add anything to it or delete? Can I have a mover and a seconder? Counsel Cummings and Counsel Sanama, all in favor? Pass, thank you. I guess there's no question from the public immediately, we don't have anything, your worship, I'm turning it back to you, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Maya, and with that, we will go to Section B, the Recreation Community Services, and pass it to Counselor Lugo.
Thank you, your worship, under seven A, under our consent agenda, we have one item, and that is the Public Library Board Minutes from August 2020 and corrected minutes from June 29. So I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to accept these. Moved by Counselor Sanama, seconded by Counsel Maya, all in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Moving down to seven B, we have a request from the SRT team, the Community Emergency Response Team, they're looking for free use of our lounge at the arena when they require it for their meetings, we have done this on a number of occasions, but to get it on the floor, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, moved by Counsel Cummings, seconded by Counsel Sanama. Do we have any questions about this? Mr. Mayor?
Not a question per se, Counsel Rose, just a statement of fact, that yes, we have been dealing with this on an ongoing basis for quite a number of years, and we know that SRT does a great service to our municipality, so it's not a big deal, what we're recommending.
Thank you, anybody else? I just have one comment, and it's very similar, if we ever had to pay them for what they do for us, it would be many, many, many more times more than the use of a free room, so with that, I will call for the vote, all in favor? And that is carried. Moving down to B2, we had a request from the Penetang Junior C Kings, they had a financial request a little while back, and it was brought back to Council for a report. In this report, you'll see the Director went through a fair bit of legwork to find out what everybody else is doing, to see what the requests were about, to see if there was anything we could do about it, and we have the recommendation in front of us, and I believe the staff recommendation was number six, or? No, it wasn't six. It was Option C, sorry, I was thinking of the other one, so if we have a mover and a seconder to get this on the floor, moved by Counsel Maya, seconded by Counsel Sanama, does anybody have any questions about this? Counselor Vadabankor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't really have a question, I think the report was well done, it really clearly lays out the options and the predicament facing our Junior C Kings. I will not be supporting the motion, I think that we should be providing some assistance, I would support Option A in the outline in the staff report, I think that the Penetang Junior C Kings are quite a fixture in our community, I'd like to see them continue. Obviously, we're not in normal times, and I think that, I think we have the financial ability, notwithstanding our deficit in our, in our arena operations, but through the grants that we're going to, we've received from the government to help cover COVID costs, I think we have some flexibility there to be able to offer the assistance, and I don't see it as being a major amount, so those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, was there anybody else that wished to speak on this? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Counsel Rose, unfortunately, I, I can't, I can't agree with Counsel Vadabankor, I can in a way, but on the other hand, I can't, it's the fact that, yes, we know the Kings have been around for a very long time, they bring a lot of good to the municipality, but on the other hand, is we have so many other organizations looking for assistance during the COVID, and the COVID is just the excuse that's used, we have another one coming up before us this evening with the YMCA, and it comes to a point in time as to where do you draw the line? We already, for council knowledge, is that over the years, we give the lounge at the arena to the Kings free of charge, which represents over the period of a season about three thousand dollars, we also have to spend an additional thousand dollars in staffing, so I, I'm afraid that I would not support anything at this time, because we have too many other ones, and there are organizations throughout the municipality looking for assistance because of the COVID.
Thank you, is there anybody else with a comment? Sherry, did you have anything to add, or do you think we got it covered?
I think, thank you, Mr. Chair, I think it's been, I think it's been covered.
All right then, I think we will call for the vote, all in favor? One, two.
Okay, we're in favor for Option C?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One, two, three, four, five, six, and that is carried, thank you. Moving down to C is our referrals, we have one ongoing one, which is about the outsourcing of day camp, we're having a follow-up, and that's just more of a reminder, so that can stay. Does anybody have anything they would like to see added to that referral item? Seeing none, we're down to questions from the media and public, seeing, oop, Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry, I was a little late out of the gate there. The Director and I have been conversing back and forth through, through email, and one of the, one of the things that we've, what we might suggest is adding the item that Deputy Mayor Dubow had pulled from the CIP earlier, which was the Health Unit's Municipal Alcohol Policy Letter, and adding it as a referral item for staff to return as necessary with, with that particular policy matter.
Is that something the Deputy Mayor would like to see on there?
Yes, absolutely.
So we have a motion from the Deputy Mayor that the alcohol.
Policy?
Policy be included in our referral item, for that we would require a mover and a seconder, so we have a mover is Deputy Mayor Dubow, seconded by Counselor Sanama, all favor in adding, of adding that as a referral item, and that is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CAO, okay, then, we are down to question period from the media and public, we don't have much around for that right now, so, Mr. Mayor, it is back to you.
Thank you, Counsel Rose, and with that, we will move on to eight, Section C, Planning and Community Development Services, and I pass it to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Under consent agenda, we have several items. The number one is Business Recovery Task Force Meeting, we've had two other meetings that are listed, the minutes are there. Second item is Bylaw Monthly Report for August and September 2020. The third item is the Heronia Animal Control Reports on the monthly comparative for 2020, and third is Third Quarter Planning and Community Development Department Updates. Are there any items that a member of council would like to pull? Seeing none, I would ask for a mover. Moved by Counsel Clu, seconded by Counsel Rose, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Matters for consideration, B, the recommendation is that Lorraine Jordan of T. Jordan be retained by the County Penitent Machine to provide real estate services in accordance with that report, PL 2020-44. Do we have discussion on this particular item, this has been before us for some time, very pleased to see it come full circle. If there is no discussion, could I have a mover? Moved by Counsel Maya, seconded by Counsel Clu, all those in favor? Carried, thank you, council. The number two item is that lift a part of Lot Control, Manel Investment, Inc., 34 and 36 Robert Street West, PL 202045. The recommended action is that the bylaw be passed to lift part Lot Control for Lot One on Registered Plan of Subdivision 55M-890 to expire three years upon passage. Our Director of Planning is here with us, if there are questions, or Andrea, would you like to comment on this particular issue?
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor, largely this application or request is a renewal of a bylaw that was passed previously, what's, what council's doing when you pass a part Lot Control is basically you're, you're suspending any rules about how land is divided, you're not controlling land division, and so that's why this bylaw is very, very specific to a certain property, and it's very specific to the time where that, that control is no longer in the municipality's hands, so it is just a renewal, and it will result in the separation of the two houses, the semi-detached houses on Robert Street West, as was the intent from the 2017 bylaw.
Thank you, madam, are there questions from members of council? Seeing none, I need a mover, or do I have a mover and seconders, Stacy? No, moved by Counsel Cummings, and seconded by Counsel Rose, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Referrals to upcoming agendas, that the Planning and Community Development Services Section endorsed the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. Our first item is vacant municipal property inventory upgrade, graffiti policy, and the review of the signed by. graffiti policy, and the review of the signed bylaw regarding hate symbols and hate speech. I do believe we're not quite ready to remove the vacant municipal property inventory. So is there any item, does it need to be added to this? Yes, Counsel LaRose.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I was just going to inquire as to, now that we have picked a real estate firm to, to look after some of this, we should be seeing that vacant municipal property inventory come back before we decide to do anything, so that council can figure out and discuss which property or properties that we are wishing to disperse. So the sooner that could come back, the better.
Thank you very much, Counsel LaRose. Madam Director, did you want to comment to that?
Not entirely, no, I mean, that's why it's still on the referrals list, is we needed to retain the real estate agent. So we've done that, and the intention is to come back to council with more information about land sales, so that's, that's my understanding as well.
Thank you, so definitely, Counsel LaRose, there will be further discussion on that particular item. Any other inquiries? Seeing none, could I have a mover? That this be accepted by Counsel LaRose, seconded by Counsel Cummings? All those in favor? Carried, thank you. Question period from media and public, we have none, so your worship, I will hand things back to you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and with that, we'll move on to Section D, Finance and Corporate Services, and pass it to Counsel Vadabankar.
Thank you, your worship. So moving to Section 9, Part D of our agenda, the Finance and Corporate Services, we have Consent Agenda, we have the Third Quarter Financial Summary, and COVID-19 Financial Impact, Number 6, and we have the Connect Penetang Machine Summary. Does anybody wish to have either one of those items pulled? We have a request to speak, is it just a quick comment, your worship? Or, sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor? You're on mute, Madam Deputy Mayor? Is it just a quick comment, or is it...
I just wanted to ask a question about Connect Penetang Machine and the ID, ideal page, ID page?
Okay.
If we respond to those ideas that come forward? Where do they go when people have an idea and they write it down?
Madam Clerk?
I can speak to that on behalf of Sarah. So the ideas page is that people are acknowledged, and they're informed about the process that's included here in the report. So our Communications Coordinator will comment and say, "Thank you for your idea." This idea will be provided to our senior management team and council. So those two processes will happen separately. Senior Management Team will get it, and as noted in the report, council will receive it through the council information package. Thank you.
Any further comments on the two consent items? Counselor Cummings, did you want to pull one, or did you just have a comment on...?
I just had a comment, I was just gonna ask the clerk how we made out with launch, and how we're making out so far with Connect Penetang.
Madam Clerk?
Happy to speak to that, we're really, really happy with the launch of the Connect Penetang Machine site. Again, our Communications Coordinator has kept me in the loop, and we did, I think we're probably into three or four weeks now, and it's, it's definitely slowed down a little bit, but you may have seen the contest that we had running, where people could win a prize pack full of swag, Penetang Machine swag. And we had over 300 people register for our site. And although that may not sound incredibly impressive, our neighbors, Town of Midland, have the exact type of site, and I think they're at that number now, currently, around that, after 13 months of it running. So we were pretty excited to get 300 people within two weeks participating, and we're hoping to continue to grow that number.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, any further comments on the consent items? Seeing none, may I have a mover and a seconder to, to approve the two consent items? Counselor Mayat and Counselor Rose, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried, thank you. Moving on down the agenda, we have a matter for consideration. We have the Midland YMCA Financial Request, and there's a series of options that are laid out. Perhaps I'll ask our treasurer just to quickly summarize the report and outline the option that is, is being forward as a recommendation. Before she, before she does that, oh, I see his worship has a request to speak, so I'll defer to his worship, but before I defer to him, I just want to indicate that my wife and I are members of the YMCA, so I did reach out to our Integrity Commissioner to determine if I was in a potential conflict of interest in terms of dealing with this item and voting on it. And the advice I got from the Integrity Commissioner is that I do not have a conflict, so I will be participating in the, in the discussion. So I just wanted to disclose that to members of council and the public. Thank you, over to you, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Vadabankar, and then my, what I am going to be requesting, Counsel Vadabankar, is that this item be deferred. We had a long talk on this item this morning with all the local mayors. Maybe members of council are aware or not, is that the four local mayors teleconference every two weeks, and this particular matter was discussed at length, and we felt that we needed more detail and information within our own parameters, so I'm requesting that we defer this until further notice.
Thank you, your worship, so I assume that means you're putting a motion forward to defer? So is there a seconder that would be prepared to second that motion to defer? Counselor Mayat? I don't believe there's any discussion on a motion to defer. So seeing that we have a mover and a seconder on this motion to defer, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried, so that matter is deferred, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Actions and Resources to Join the Coalition of Inclusive Communities. So in your agenda package is a, is a report that outlines what the organization is all about, who has joined the organization, et cetera, et cetera. Our clerk has prepared this report. Before I put it... Oh, sorry?
Sorry, I think we just missed an item, item number two, under B, the Youth Endowment Fund Agreement.
Certainly, I was scrolling through here, I just scrolled right by it. So thank you, Madam Clerk, so item two is the Town of Penetang Machine Youth Endowment Fund Agreement with Huronia Community Foundation. In your agenda package, there's a, there's a report that outlines the, outlines the program. It's been prepared by our treasurer. Madam Treasurer, is there anything that you wanted to add to the report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no, nothing to add, really, it's, it's a housekeeping item that Huronia Community's Foundation has asked us to get this amendment to bylaw signed to coincide with better wording provided by their Canadian head office, I guess you would call it. But also just an informational report to advise council of, of the actual Youth Endowment Fund, and historically, how it's been used.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, any questions of the treasurer on the report? Okay, may I have a mover for the, for the motion? Deputy Mayor Dubow, and seconder Counselor Sanama, so the motion is that report FIN 2020-22 be received, and that the amendment to the Town of Penetang Machine Youth Endowment Fund Agreement with Huronia Community Foundation be approved, and finally, that the clerk be directed to bring forward an amendment to bylaw 2011-08 for council approval. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is carried. Okay, so now I can go to the next item, which was the Actions and Resources to Join the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities. The clerk has prepared a report on this matter outlining what would be required to join this, this organization and to participate, and I'll ask the clerk if she wouldn't mind just hitting the highlights of her report. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, this is a previous recommendation that was approved by council, requesting staff to look into joining the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities. And so based on what we researched and, and found, it's believed to be the best option to really get our community involved in this, in this initiative, to really hear what's happening and see what we can do, what work we can do. And that's why we're recommending a, a work task force, working group, to assist in, in coming up with the, the plan and, and helping us support this commitment to continue this within our community.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, any questions of the clerk on her report? Counselor Clu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no questions, just having brought this matter before council in June, I'm very happy it's here today. I thank staff for this fine report, I think it's no surprise to everyone on council and in our community, there's a lot of hate and division in the world right now, and I really see this as a first step, release of another big step we can take to bring our community a little bit closer together and, and find some more understanding and create more inclusivity, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clu, any other comments? Okay, so I'll read the motion and ask for a mover and seconder. So the motion states that staff be directed to begin the process of joining the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, formerly known as the Canadian Coalition for Municipalities Against Race and Discrimination, and sign a declaration to support the 10 Coalition of Inclusive Municipality commitments. And that staff be directed to report back with options for an ad hoc working group to be appointed to create supporting governance structures with internal, external, internal and external stakeholders to advise on internal diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, and support the creation of a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Action Plan. So that's the motion, may I have a mover? Counselor Sanama, a seconder, Counselor Cummings, any discussion on this? So just a question to the clerk then, before we move on it. Madam Clerk, does this mean this will be coming back to, to committee the whole with, with an action plan laid out? Is that what this really means?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it won't actually include the action plan, but what it will include is options for the working group, so, you know, recommendations on how many members, how we're gonna recruit those members, what if Terms of Reference would include that type of thing, which of course would, could change once the group is created and they, they realize themselves and how they want to proceed. But it'll, it'll be more about, about solidifying that, that ad hoc working group, and, and looking for those members.
Thank you, okay, any further questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion's carried. So moving on then to referrals, we have a number of referrals. We have the airport, Huronia Airport Commission Joint Business Operation Review, Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, Options and Planning for the Joining of the Coalition, Penetang Machine Kings Request to Council for 2021 Season, Options for Reducing ICE Rental Fees, and the YMCA Request for Support, Options for Providing Financial Support. So Madam Clerk, we've dealt with some of these from the committee's standpoint, we've deferred one of them. So what's your recommendation with respect to what stays on and what should fall off?
I would suggest the Coalition and the Penetang Kings' requests both be removed. YMCA, I believe, is coming back, so it wouldn't hurt to leave it there.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, so may I have a mover then to... First of all, are there any other referrals that need to go on the list? I don't think so, so let me go back to the motion, that the Finance and Corporate Services Section endorsed the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff as amended. So may I have a mover for that motion, the Counselor Rose, seconder Counselor Cummings? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, thank you, your worship. I don't think there's any question period for meeting in the public, so I will turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you, Counsel Vadabankar, and with that, thank you, council and staff. This meeting and committee of the whole is adjourned.